Call to order, study session for Tuesday, March 3rd, 2015. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Walz?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney? Commissioner Palacek?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Chatwell?
Here.
Seeing none. We have arrived at number four.
First up, we have a presentation by Kent at the airport, regarding the airport.
Good morning and thank you. I'll be respectful of your time and my goal is to give you an update of the project for those that haven't sort of lived through it to this point and then to let you know where we are and discuss briefly a decision point that I think is coming up very soon. And I don't mind questions during the presentation, so just get my attention and I'll try to answer your question as we go. And this is just, so you know the perspective, it's an unusual photo, but it is of our airport from the south to the north. It's an unusual perspective and it's the same photo we provided to the FAA as a thank you after this project was done. John Mayfield at the ADO talks about that and thanks us every time he sees us at the The deficiencies of the runway are really the key factor that's prompted this project. And this again is a photo of the airport and you'll see from the south where the cursor is, that's runway 1432 and in 2009, we fixed these runway safety deficiencies on this runway. You can even see the grass on a closer photo where it used to go almost all the way down to Wildwood, so we did not have required safety areas on that runway. It was 3,500 feet long. As part of that project and suggested by the FAA, it was increased in length to 4,000 feet and then pushed out to the north where we captured the safety areas at the south and then again at the north. And that particular class of runway only requires 300 feet of safety area. We have more than that, but it only required 300 feet. Now, of course, I'll do some more specifics about the deficiencies of runway 624 and that is the runway that's destined to be replaced. This is the aerial photo over Airport Road. That runway is, if you're going on the 24 end and those numbers are selected by the compass heading, so your compass heading should say 240 degrees if you're using that runway. If it doesn't, then you may not be on the right runway. And that's 5,349 feet by 150 feet wide currently and it does not have safety areas at either end. One of the, and I'll talk about a little bit later, one of the things that we battle is this perception is that we're building longer runway for bigger aircraft and quite frankly, the new runway will be 50 feet narrower and one foot longer, so it's larger but only very technically. And this is a close-up of that end of Airport Road. It drops 20 feet to, and there's almost no area here to capture an airplane if it were to land long or to have to abort a takeoff. And this is Airport Road. And then runway six, you can see there's a little bit of safety area there, but right in here at the very end is the glide slope where it's actually the localizer antenna, which is part of the instrument landing system. And in the new configuration, that would be 1,000 feet from the end of the pavement and now it's just maybe 150 feet and we had a college plane go off of that runway a couple three years ago and hit that antenna. Very little damage and no injuries, but even that type of an obstruction is out of standard for our current runway system. And then, of course, here's Woodville Road and a fence and the railroad tracks, so there's no way to capture the 1,000 feet here without building a new runway. And you see this runway, even though it's the opposite end of runway 24, is shorter and that's because this threshold is not at the end of the runway, it's displaced and that's because of obstructions coming over M60, so they have to displace that threshold and so you don't get as much length when landing using runway six. And this is the intersection of the new runway. It's 100 feet wide and it's only 700 feet long, but we've actually started to construct this runway because when 1432, and that's this runway here, when that was constructed, we pre-built this intersection and these edges would allow us to construct up to that runway without closing 1432. So these ends here are outside of the safety areas for runway 1432. And so the overriding question is why do this project? And the primary reason is because the FAA has standards and those standards surround safety in many cases and this is a safety project. We are the last airport in Michigan of any significance that has runway safety deficiencies, so we are the last project and quite frankly, 10 years ago, eight years ago, there was almost a queuing system where airports like Holland, Lenawee, Hillsdale were in the queue first because they didn't have as much, I guess, components to it. And so we've actually waited patiently to get our turn. And you might remember the last time I did a presentation, about a year ago, this is a Falcon 20 jet that slid off of, was landed on runway six, slid off of the runway. This is Airport Road up to the top of the screen. The pilots were familiar with our airport and they knew what awaited them at the end of Airport Road. So they managed to put in enough controls to go off of the runway but onto the taxiway. This upper right photo shows where they left the taxiway, went out into what was kind of soft ground at that time, took out several taxi lights and then ended up back on the taxiway facing the opposite way. They had a brake problem, it was at our airport for several days fixing the brakes. So there are a number of reasons that airplanes need safety areas. It's not just big airplanes, sometimes small airplanes, but in this case, they experienced a mechanical brake problem. So the overriding question is can we keep what we have? You know, we're at 5,349, we don't have safety areas, but it's been that way since 1942, so why can't we just keep that? Well, the FAA has put us on notice in the 1999-2000 era that if we didn't correct these safety areas with new pavement, they would come in and take the safety area out of the existing pavement. So they would shorten runway 624. We would not then have 4,000 feet of runway. And that's the minimum, it's not enough for the aircraft we need to have come in here, but it's the minimum. That's why 1432 went out to 4,000 feet. And so we would have a main runway without 4,000 feet. And I tried to think of how to explain that and the closest analogy I could come up with is if you could picture I-94 that had exit ramps for private cars, but none for commercial vehicles or business vehicles. So you could drive through town on I-94, but you couldn't get off. And that's the best analogy I could come up with of having a main runway the size of Jackson without 4,000 feet or in this case, 5,000 feet or more. So the answer to the question is no, there have been some things that the FAA has done when it comes to safety, when they sense a risk, they'll make decisions that are broad and they, I really believe they would do this, particularly since they've invested fairly heavily, as you'll see in a moment, in this project to this point. This figures have been skewed just a little bit. There would be a little more in this category and a little less in the next one based on a recent grant, but to this point, we've spent $15 million to fix the safety areas of 1432, build a new maintenance building, acquire 24 parcels and easements in preparation for where we are now. And you can see that the local share is about a half a million dollars. Some of those grants, most of those grants have been 2.5%, but there are some where we only have one source of funding, state local, and those are 10% grants, so those have been fairly sparse, but they do get in here, they kind of elevate the 2.5% match if you look at that as a percentage of the whole. And this is what's left to do, about $22 million. Right now, we have a 5% official match, although the grant I'll be bringing to you probably in April is a 2.5% match. We were grandfathered on the 2014 funding to 2.5%. I just had an email last night from Congressman Wahlberg, he's asked to meet with us next week at his initiation and perhaps he'll have good news for us on future grants. And as you can see, at 5%, it's a million dollars, if we were fortunate enough to get a 2.5% grandfathering, it would cut that figure in half to a half a million. And those are the grants that are programmed between now and 2017, so this is a fairly short period of time relatively speaking. And then, of course, the elephant in the room is the landfill at the airport. And this is an aerial, this is that end of the runway 725 and this is Woodville Road. And this is our old maintenance building on Woodville Road. Woodville Road has been abandoned, it's now owned by the county and the airport. And this looks a lot different now because there's been about three weeks of tree clearing out there, there's not hardly a tree between M60 and Maynard right now. It looks significantly different, I would invite you to drive around M60 or even down Woodville Road to take a look. This is an engineered drawing showing the pink area, I guess that might be pink, is the area of the landfill that has to be excavated and we had originally proposed moving that onsite and capping it. That was primarily because the costs per ton for flow control were prohibitive to even consider moving that landfill material offsite. The landfill has been studied, probed, delineated, analyzed and assessed since 1989. The 1989 study was based on some complaints from the Woodville Road residents, they thought their wells were polluted by the landfill. That study didn't show anything off the charts and pretty much the metals that were in the water were what they call background metals that are just naturally occurring. But all the rest of these studies were related to the landfill, trying to get our arms around the quantities, the type of material and an assessment of what that material represents. The reason we have to relocate those materials is because the new runway crosses a large portion of that landfill and the runway cannot be constructed on top of those landfill materials because they are unsuitable to be under that pavement and they're also unsuitable to be digging into for drainage systems and electrical systems. You'd have workers digging through landfill material, so that's why they need to be moved. So the project generally related to the landfill is to move about 170,000 cubic yards of material and either onsite and cap it or offsite and just dispose it in a certified landfill. And I've been in these sessions just to learn a little bit about what's being dealt with on the old landfill that the county now has in terms of leach aid and monitoring and things like that, and I really believe that the best decision long-term is to move these materials offsite because now we can take competitive bids from area landfills and we have some budgetary figures for that type of move. So part of the landfill move is covered by a grant. Why is it covered by a grant? Because they are unsuitable soils and if they were other materials that were unsuitable, they would be project eligible. If it was muck or loamy materials or something, then the FAA would say they're eligible to be moved. So about $2 million of the landfill costs are covered by the grant. That's digging up the material, loading it out of truck and then refilling the hole. We do believe we might be able to justify some other related costs, treating the leach aid, not treating it, but pumping and de-watering, the treatment fees would be a local cost because that's related to the landfill. So those are the parts of the landfill move offsite, whether offsite or onsite, covered by a grant. The estimates right now, and these are based on engineering estimates and actually calling landfill facilities and trucking firms and putting those figures together, the total cost was, is about $5 million with a contingency of 10% and the engineers can't even give any guidance on what a contingency should be because when you start digging up that large of an area, there's going to be surprises and there'll have to be a marshaling of resources to address those. And those are just the hauling and the tipping fees. And my hopes are that since the highway funding won't be in place anytime while we're bidding out this is that we are attractive enough for trucking, hauling, the price of fuel, that these costs are less, substantially less. And I deal with these, I hear these misperceptions personally and I read them on M Live, I try not to look at those comments, but it's kind of like going down the highway and going by a bad crash where your instinct says you shouldn't look at it, but you do and then you're sorry. So the general public gets no value out of the airport, I'm going to have a couple of slides that show that's not accurate, they just may not understand the value they get out of the airport. The airport is a playground for rich people to play with their airplanes. I know a lot of pilots, some in this room, I don't know their financial well-being, but I can tell you that they probably are more like a cross-section of Jackson than they are the rich 3% or 5%, but the perception is there, that it's only for rich people, it's just they choose their, to put their disposable income in a different, they don't have the cabin up north, they have an airplane, so that's just how they choose. The purpose of the runway is to build a longer runway to allow bigger airplanes to land. It is bigger by a foot, but that's not the purpose. The purpose is safety, but I cannot get that misperception, I can't battle it, but I thought I would at least address it here. And then what I read on M Live was engineered materials arresting system should be used instead of a new runway. As you could see, if you remember that photo of 624, there's no room for any type of a system on the top of that hill and there's likely not room on the other end because of the railroad tracks. And in many cases, based on what I've talked with engineers, that those have to be designed for a certain weight of aircraft because they're designed, it's like a honeycomb concrete at the end of the runway and they capture the airplane by it sinking into these materials and so it has to kind of be designed to either a heavy aircraft or a light aircraft and we really have a mix. But those are some of the common misperceptions that we deal with. And then, of course, when we're at a decision point like this, we start to then compete with diminished resources and declining resources and so the question's sometimes asked, well, what value is the airport? What does it really mean to me? Who uses the airport? I think answers part of that question. Private airplane owners, corporations, new and current pilots for training, cargo haulers, we have a cargo hauler base at the airport, small cargo. This is the one that's kind of surprising is there's a large use by medical, patients for transplants. I've had three patients come to me, said they had to be within two hours of an all-weather airport in order to get either to the Mayo Clinic or someplace like that for a liver transplant or a heart transplant. And so I would go through them, if it's after hours, here's how you get in, here's how you park. And the most recent one was a liver transplant patient. He did park his car in the wrong spot, but that probably wasn't high on his mind when he was loading his wife and himself on this airplane. Patient transport, organ transports, local businesses, law enforcement and specialized aviation companies. We have a company at Jackson that has five airplanes. They fly the cable TV network all over North America, they detect leaks in that network and they identify then that leak to the cable company and because the frequencies that leak from your cable TV system are the same frequency that airplanes navigate on, so it's very important and that's why the FCC requires this service. These are updated figures, the National Aviation, and that's exclusive of passenger aviation. The national value is $219 billion. In Michigan, it's a $4 billion business and here in Jackson, it's $17,327.792. And you can question those, you know, are they inflated? I don't know, but it's the same formula that's used across the board. That's the value and it has to do with the number of airplanes that come and go, the number of passengers, the number of businesses. There are 50 jobs located on airport property, private sector primarily, some public sector, but there are 50 jobs located at the airport. And then, of course, Dave Richmond, Richmond Brothers, Inc. is moving, they bought the consumers hanger, they're coming out to the airport. This is a rather long quote, but obviously, they're going to get a corporate aircraft, he flies a lot to do his business and I think the key words are able to launch runways that are long enough to matter and he even cites the value of the control tower for his business. Another one is worth investments, Eric Borum has three airplanes now, he's a venture capitalist, that's the way I understand his business, but again, he identifies to his business specifically what's the value of his airport, of this airport to him. And then I asked Tim Rogers for his perspective from a broad basis and he says quality airport is one of the foundations of a good transportation system. To reinforce the reason we're doing this project is because of safety, 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 and here are examples, guardrails, railroad crossing signals, hard hats, control towers and bullet resistant vests, I learned not to call them bulletproof, bullet resistant vests, they're all part of safety of doing particular business and the airport with runoff areas is another example of that. So builds a safer primary runway, the 64,000 passengers comes from a calculation just based on my observations of one and a half passengers per airplane. Every airplane has one passenger, the pilot, and many have two, most have two, the corporate ones come in and they have a lot more than two, but I just did made a safe estimate of 1.5 per operation. We meet the FAA safety standards. The value is that we have all new infrastructure. Because of this project, we have a brand-new maintenance building, we have all new light controls, we have high-tech computer controls, we have all new cabling, new pavement and those things are ancillary benefit of doing this project. And in my estimation, our needs for an airport for decades to come, and I don't think it takes a lot of thought to really think about why that is true. And then there's some key decision points, when I looked at our history, in 1927, this is what, 25, 26 years after the first powered flight, Wiley Reynolds and his wife donated 160 acres to the city of Jackson because he recognized the long-term need for an airport. 1942, the current runway configuration was made, that was primarily due to the war. They were doing these projects all over and as I've said before, the original article from the CIPAT identified that they did not then install the safety areas as part of that project. In 1950, there was a decision to relocate Airport Road and extend the runway. 61, the air traffic control tower and terminal building were opened and the air traffic control tower has been operating since then. 1976, the official transfer of the airport from the county to the city occurred and that was done to create a larger tax base to support the airport. The city had, based on the articles, gone to the major townships and asked for support and they did not get it and so the decision was made to make it a county-wide airport. And then in 2001 was our first official approved airport layout plan to show the current runway configurations and future runways. And then in 2015, what I characterize as the final phases of this project. Currently, we're doing tree clearing, if you haven't been around the airport, I would urge you to do so, it is remarkably different and we're in the final engineering phase. We have a meeting this week with Meaden Hunt and Envirologic to further coordinate development of the landfill move specs along with the final engineering that Meaden Hunt is working on. It's been a tremendous amount of cooperation to get to this point. And then June of 2015, we planned to bid out about $10 million in construction projects and that is because this accelerated grant that the FAA has promised us must have bids before they will award the grant. The bids used to be based on engineer estimates and no longer, is that true either with the state or the federal, they're based on engineering or based on actual bids? And you can imagine the trick bag, if you have an engineer's estimate that's way underneath the actual low bid, then you have a problem, so they're based on bids. And this is kind of an old saying, but I think it's accurate and may be good to emphasize, if you build a mile of highway, one can travel a mile, if you build a mile of runway, one can travel the world. And that really is, I think, very accurate. And this is a photo of the corporate 737 that was at our airport last fall. People ask, well, don't you need bigger runways for bigger airplanes? That's, you can see the size of that fuel truck in comparison, is a large airplane. I don't know why they were here, they weren't really giving forth the reason for their visit, but it was a business visit. So that's the end of my presentation, I'd be happy to try to answer questions that you might have.
Thank you, Kent, for that detailed presentation. I am looking for a knowledgeable person known as a historian, so hopefully you'll be able to answer this question, if not, any of the other commissioners, welcome to help me understand this. So I'm hearing you to say that in 2001, a decision was made to move forward to meet these standards?
Yes.
And at that time, what information was presented to the commissioners with an understanding of the relocation of the landfill? I mean, because from the beginning, I assume something, everyone knew something had to be done, so this dollar amount compared to what was given then, or can you give me some insight there, please?
I don't think I can answer specifically what information was given. There was an ad hoc committee, a very broad-based committee, I think Commissioner Elwell was on that. The data shows that there were many alternatives explored and I think it probably boiled down to the only way to get about 7,500 feet of flat land, which is what you need for the runway plus the safety areas, is in that orientation. Had people been looking down the road, they wouldn't have built a maintenance building on the future taxiway, but that was done in the 80s. So that's why I kind of showed the delineation of what we've done on the landfill in terms of research to get to this point, but I don't recall seeing any cost estimates or any delineation of the landfill. It seemed like it was probably so far down the road that, you know, they would get to it when they got to it. But I know that none of the other alternatives, one of which was to shorten the runway, the other was to build a tunnel over Airport Road, all those things were considered and this was, I think, would still be relative to those, a lower cost option, at least for the tunnel part. So I don't recall reading anything specific about the landfill in those, but there were public hearings, presentations, and then there was a final report written with a recommendation.
I think the tunnel was going to be under Airport Road, or under the runway on Airport Road. No, I don't remember anything, Kent, about the cost of moving the landfill at that time, I think it was so preliminary and, you know, we really didn't know much about what was in there for sure at that time until later studies were done, as I recall.
Good morning, Kent.
Morning.
Nice presentation.
Thank you.
What do you anticipate the county's share of this cost to be?
The share approximately at 5% for the remaining grant eligible is $1 million, if it's 5%. The landfill hauling and tipping, we estimate to be $5 million or less, that's a local cost. Remember that a little over $2 million of the landfill move is covered by the grant and that's included in the $21 million total. So our local costs, if we were maxed at my estimate on tipping and hauling and the match, which we have anticipated, but maybe not in this short a time, so that's not budgeted, but it's programmed, would be $6 million, leveraging about $21 million in construction and a safer runway.
Thank you, sir.
Kent, how guaranteed are we that the federal funding's going to be there for the remainder of it? I mean, are we fairly certain that that'll continue to be there for as long as we have the match?
Well, we've asked the FAA that and they can't promise monies that aren't authorized or appropriated, but they've never not finished one of these projects. And last year during our funding meeting, we were supposed to get $4.75 million in 2015 and the balance in 2017, and they said, we want to give you all $9.5 million in 2015. And so that would be the last money from the FAA discretionary grant that's controlled by Detroit FAA. The balance is programmed in the state system and that's about as, it's about as guaranteed as it will ever be. So if you were to- So if you were to ask me that 12 years ago, I wouldn't have been quite so confident. But it's all programmed, is probably my best answer.
Kent, talk a little bit about how state discretionary has put together other monies over the years to make sure this project moves forward even during the 2008, '09 time periods.
Yeah, there's three pots of money. The state of Michigan is a block grant state where the FAA gives the state of Michigan large amounts of grant money. They also pay the state to administer those grants, even though they're FAA, they're administered by the state. So the FAA is acting as the, or the state is acting as the FAA's agent. That actually has helped us because we're much more close to those people. So the state apportionment dollars are those. There's also a pot of money that's just state money. And that's state grant money that required a 10% match. That's a fairly small pot of money. And then there's this federal discretionary funding that really, we have waited years to get into the queuing system because of the competition for that. And that's the $9 million, $9.5 million we anticipate in June. And that is controlled by the FAA Airport District Office. And there's a lot of congressional input into how those funds are allocated and where they go. So there's three pots of money. The match was 2.5% for us for many, many years, even on land. And we actually benefited from that because now it's 10%. And I haven't calculated that, but that would have cost us probably another $700,000. But our land is done. So there's three pots of money. There's the state apportionment from the federal. There's the state money. That's a 10% grant. That's local state funding. And then there's this discretionary funding that we're now in the queue to receive.
So Kent, if a constituent or a citizen were to ask this question, to me, it's the other monkey, it's the other elephant in the room. They don't want, they're concerned with this large dollar amount, this allocation of funds being spent on this project. So what are the consequences of either putting it on hold or stopping it?
Right. I think they would be severe and long-term consequences. One, there was a commitment made by previous bodies, probably in 2001, and kind of reinforced as we've worked through this very lengthy, multi-decade project. And I don't specifically know what the reaction would be, but those funds would go someplace else very soon. So the $9.5 million would be gone. The state would reallocate their funding. We would obviously save our local match. But we would then have the current runway system, having spent $13 or $14 million to get to this point, we would have purchased land that we didn't need ultimately if we were to stop it. That's my answer. We would have purchased easements we don't need. And I think it would be, in the political realm and the technical realm, it would be very difficult to ever restart that project in the future. It has been sometimes a political and technical minefield to get to this point. I was still in my 40s when this project started. And I won't tell you how old I am now. But it has been a long time to get to this point. And I think it would be kind of like, I realize the investment. I realize the competing demands for these resources. So I'm not underestimating that at all. It would be kind of like turning around 100 feet from the top of Mount Everest and going back down the hill. You're probably never going to go back up there again. I guess that would be my best. It would be, it would be a long-term and a very devastating project because we'd end up with an unsafe runway that I believe the FAA would shorten. They would, I'm sure that would happen.
Kent, isn't it also fair to say that there are businesses and people in the community that have made decisions probably prior to now and continue to make them based on the plan to do the airport plan?
I think that's absolutely true. There's been a, I mean, I enjoyed, I have enjoyed widespread support from the political entities, federal, state, local, and from business people in this project. That's not true in every community. I don't think the understanding of the airport is as sophisticated in many other communities. It's actually hard for me to get my mind around not doing this. Because you would end up with not 5,000 feet. You wouldn't have a main runway that has 5,000 feet. You wouldn't have 4,000 feet either. And that wouldn't be a free option because all those lights and all the ILS would go away. The lights would all have to be reconfigured. There would be an investment just to shorten that runway. And the FAA has done this before on GPS night approaches. There's an obstruction, and they just shut down the approach. They don't tell the airports. They don't give them really much of an option. They just shut it down because it's perceived to be unsafe. And I didn't even talk about, because I think it's kind of a, you go out on a limb a little bit if you talk about the value of the construction itself. I haven't even talked about that because those are short-term jobs. But it's somewhere around 14 jobs per million invested in construction that are created. But I didn't talk about that because that's a short-term thing. Those jobs are going to go away at the end of the project, so.
Kent, and secondly, I'm glad to hear that you have the same angst when you delve into the comments in the newspaper. But besides those, do you hear of any kind of organized opposition to us moving forward with this? I mean, I rarely hear any negative comments about what we're doing. I read some of the same comments in the newspaper that have no names attached to them. But I hear of no movement to say, "Stop. Don't do this."
I don't. And, you know, we had the required public hearings before this first phase and before the airport layout plan was approved. And we began construction on the first runway. And there was no one there that expressed anything against the project. There were some homeowners there wondering logically what was the impact on them because they were near the airport. But in terms of the project itself, there weren't any negative comments. There were positive comments from people that were associated with the airport that had an interest in it. I think that's accurate.
I think it should be noted, though, that also we've been approached by area businesses to the importance of this project, the impact that it has on their businesses, and their support in the past when asked, and how important it is to them to go forward with this that are nearby the airport.
Right. And that's why I included some of the quotes from the people that are specifically associated with the airport. But there's a broad-based interest. The value of the airport, that $17 million, is based on businesses not at the airport that rely on the airport to do their business. And we saw a lot of that when the just-in-time system was created. That's how those parts got in and out of here when there was a crisis, was by air.
Grant, when we decided to move forward on this project back when you were in your 40s, I think we took on an obligation to finish it. And is there a chance that if we can't finish it, the FAA is going to want to be repaid for their investment because we didn't follow through on our end?
I know that whenever we take grants, we sign this huge package of grant assurances that are thicker than the grant. One is that you're committing to running the airport for the next 20 years as an airport. That's not the issue here. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know that they would give us a bill for the money they've spent so far. But I think you're right. It was a commitment made by a previous body that's been reinforced a number of times over the years. And we're now at that critical point of, and, you know, on the operations, you know, we generate about 60% of our own income through fees and leases operationally, not capital, but operationally. So the net cost of the airport is about $230,000 a year for operations. So if you compare that against the $17 million in value, I think that figure would go down significantly if we didn't have a proper main runway. And we invest, have supported the air traffic control tower, you know, with some local funding that keeps that there. That is all part of that safety picture that we try to keep. And you saw the business people talking about the value of having a full-service airport with proper runways and air traffic.
I would submit to you in those assurances that we gave the FAA when we embarked on this process, the project, that us guaranteeing them we would operate it for another 20 years was at the new standards. So I don't think we'd make many friends there.
You know, we had these first meetings with the FAA. The first question they had, because they're not going to embark on a project that didn't have local support, was is there local support for the project or is there any type of concerted faction against it? And even in 2002, we'd started to bank the match well ahead of any construction. And that carried a lot of weight with them to show that there was that local support. In fact, that was pretty much unprecedented in their experience, that a community would have the foresight to start banking the match. Of course, we didn't know how that was going to all unfold over the next 13 years.
Thanks, Kent, and thanks for the presentation.
You're welcome.
These large grants you're talking about, before they're implemented, did you read them first or afterwards?
I read the first one, and they're all the same. And you can't change one punctuation mark in that grant. So the value of reading it was, I'd just go to the dollar figures first.
There you go. I'd just like to say, part being on Airport Board and also all the information that we've received, you know, obviously FAA had its standards. And we obviously, to make it all simplified, we wanted to keep an airport here. And from my perspective, it's been shown that, it's been shown that, why it's good to have an airport here in Jackson County, not just because of current business, but hopefully future business that come here will say, you know, because you have the airport, okay, you know, we'll go ahead and, pun on words here, we'll go ahead and land our business here. So I'm certainly, I don't like the fact that we got to come up with money for the landfill and all that. But other than that, I'm certainly a strong proponent of this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thanks, Kent.
Thank you.
Next issue is the M&amp;A contract. I assume everyone's had opportunity to review. Are there any questions or concerns or otherwise regarding the TA? Yes, sir.
I don't have it in front of me, but one section I called on yesterday, just to clarify. I think there was an increase from six days to nine days, I think, per year that allowed for conferences and training, I think. And just to clarify, that's across the group. It's not per employee. I think it was worth noting that it's not per employee. That's how I took it when I first read it, but Adam explained to me. So thank you.
Anyone else? Questions or concerns? I know we're looking for a motion on this because there is no retroactivity anymore for this type of union. So they would like to go ahead and move forward.
Do we motion in support? Any comments to the motion? Can you post the vote? The clerk will post the vote. Audit firm?
Yeah, next up, we have Finance Director Jim Latham is going to speak to the audit proposal.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we're asking for your approval today of an agreement with Raymond to be engaged to do the audit for the next four years. And a memo shows detail as to what the fees are. A select committee reviewed proposals from four different firms and based on qualifications and expertise, that is, experience with governmental auditing, specific experience with counties and with road commissions. Raymond firm was the most qualified.
Questions?
Dave? Kind of an odd question, but do we know why Plant Moran did not submit a bid?
Well, I guess the gist of it is that our process is to ask for qualifications first and then negotiate a price later. Five years ago, we went through the process, and basically they would not negotiate. Their fees were higher. And that's my understanding of it, anyway. So they decided to bow out of the process.
I'd move for approval as requested.
I have one thing I'd like to do before that, Dave. I do appreciate that, and we will entertain your motion in a moment. Michael, could you explain why we're doing this out of sequence, please, and not going to committee and everything?
Sure. As Jim just indicated, we asked for proposals for qualifications, not necessarily for pricing. This should have been on the agenda last month. But as we started getting into the pricing element, meaning negotiations with the vendor, let's just say it took some additional effort to get the price to where we felt it was needed, where it needed to be. And as such, we missed last month's meeting. However, our audit deadline does not change because we struggle with negotiations. We still have to have our audit done by the end of June. So we want to go ahead and move forward quickly on this today so that we can engage these guys and they can get in here. That's the idea behind that.
With that, Commissioner Elwell still forward your motion?
Support.
And support. Madam Clerk, could you post the ballot? Mr. Wallace, vote?
No.
Roger.
Mr. Wallace?
Motion carried. Item seven, Mike.
Item seven is the GIS aerial imagery. And we have Scott Ames here to present. Now with this, let's see, I think we had alluded to earlier, not today, but the other day, that we were looking for approval. That is an error. We are not looking for approval today. Today is to just, you know, review it, understand it, explain it. It'll go to committee and then full board on the Tuesday night meeting where we would hope to seek approval. Thank you.
You have before you the background material. And it's been a long process in terms of aerial imagery because in the past, we've flown oblique imagery over the last two flights. Pardon? Oblique imagery is being able to view it from four sides as well as a straight down, which is the ortho product. After review of that and the Policy Board reviewing that, the cost for that is very prohibitive this time around. The expense on that has increased from our last flight. And also, the city is not interested in participating in an oblique flight. So that kind of sinks that right off the bat. And some of the townships were balking at the price, too. The committee, when we looked at that, we did a quick survey with Survey Monkey to the communities. The people that answered that, there was very little support for an oblique imagery once we explained the cost over a traditional aerial ortho flight. The committee recommended that we go with a regular ortho imagery flight. We solicited three proposals. One is going, the state has a state contract, a three-year contract with an ortho imagery company. Then we solicited proposals from two other companies, Williams Aerial Survey and Mapping and Coachera. They're both, one's out of Indiana, one's out of Ohio. Once we had those, the state contract is cost prohibitive. It's actually more than I can go to the regular vendors, which is no surprise to me in some ways. But after a lot of examination and a lot of discussion between me and my staff, we're recommending Williams Aerial Mapping. We can get 4-inch aerial imagery for the cost of 6-inch from the other firm. Traditionally, we've flown 6-inch imagery, which is, the scale is, you can zoom in to what it was equivalent to 6 inches on the ground theoretically and see. The 4-inch is, what, 30% greater detail? And in your packet, you had an example of 4-inch imagery. They actually put a plane in the air. collecting footprints of structures, decks, and in-ground pools. Those are very sought after by the assessors in the county equalization department. I've talked to Ruth about this project, too. So we would collect those off our old 2007 imagery. And then the new flight, we would collect that. And then we would do a change analysis. We can show where there's pluses, minuses. So in a sense, it'll help the assessors to create a fair across the board in their communities of looking at whether the pools have been removed or whether they've been added, decks have been increased, decks have been taken off, or actually buildings tore down, or additions to that. And assessors have to evaluate 20% of their community every year, do a review or study on those. So this will pinpoint areas that they can go look at. In that, part of their job, too, is to identify areas that they need to look at. I mentioned, I think the value of that is that whether you increase the taxable value of the county or to a community, it'll be fair across the board for people if you get a better assessment of a community. The other caveat, too, is that building outlines, that's something we can use in our GIS system. We can put on the map. We have the aerial imagery, we keep up there. But to have the building footprints to build into a base map or do other things for, calculate square footage, whatever, has some great value to the community. And it's the first time ever, we're one of the few communities that really doesn't have building footprints because the cost was huge in the past. But going this route makes it very affordable. I have had come, talked to a number of townships and they're very supportive. They've been calling me wanting to know what their costs would be for this project. They're supportive, moving forward with that. I've got to secure those, the formal part of that side. The City of Jackson, you saw in there, is in at $10,000 in this proposal. That still could be a little tentative. I still don't know, the engineer doesn't want to fly till 2017. The assessor does want to fly. That's something they got to work out internally. We do have, in the capital improvements program, we do have $40,000 budgeted for two fiscal years, 15 and 16, $40,000 in '16. I'm proposing that we, with this cost proposal I put before you, in the best-case scenario, we'd only use 40. We'd save the $40,000 in '16. But they're going to be, last time we flew, there was two townships that didn't participate. Those are smaller dollars, but we might have to tap some of that $40,000 in the second year to cover those costs, or the city chooses not to participate. The communities that don't participate have to use the public-facing website. The communities that do participate, most of them in our assessing system, can put the aerials right inside their assessing system. And as partners in this project, they would have the aerial imagery to use locally. The people that don't, or the communities that don't, will have to rely on the public-facing website. They can't use it inside their internal programs. So that's basically what I have before you. I have checked Williams with other counties. I did check references. I have known this firm for a long time. In fact, they used to be called Clyde Williams back before digital. And the Mylars we used to have, they did fly the county in 1986, 1991, and 1996. So I've had quite a bit of experience with this company and never been disappointed in their work. So I feel confident in moving forward with this company and a good proposal. What I was attempting to do here, and I will have a final contract for Mr. Overton before the, it comes to the commission. In fact, I should have that in the next few days, so.
Question, we had a name change from Clyde Williams to Williams?
Clyde passed away.
Okay. It's the same company, though?
Same company.
Okay, I mean...
The president of the company now used to be a stereo imagery interpretator with the company. So he's been there ever since I've known him and worked with him, and now he's president of the company.
Thank you.
Next up is item eight, JC.TAP grants. I think, Carl, did you want to speak to this? I think the answer is yes.
Uh, yes. I'll be kind. Yeah, we'll start with the Safe Routes to School. As everybody knows, this, in a very hurried way, back in the January, in our January Board meeting, we had a sidebar, I believe it was Personnel Finance meeting, we went in, went ahead and passed the resolution on this back in January. And since that time, it's been, quite frankly, quite contentious. These are, the Safe Routes Grant, this involves a Safe Routes Grant and a TAP Grant, all in this one resolution, all in this one staff report that we have here. And also in our documents, we have a resolution from Leonie Township who ultimately contact, or excuse me, contract with our Road Department to take on all the responsibilities of owning, maintenance, et cetera. The problems we ran into after January is that these are all federal requirements. The state then files our federal requirements. The state then mandates to our Road Department, there's a lot of detailed information. The state wanted a lot of different things changed in the documentation. At one point, we had a number instead of a letter, and they wanted just that one thing changed. I could go on and on and on. But like I say, this has been quite a, it's been quite a trip. Should have been much simpler, but with so many requirements and so many things that occurred, it wasn't. So because of all the changes that needed made, we're back here today to address, again, this is a Safe Routes to School Grant, which would be approximately $200,000. That's already been programmed at the state level. And then there's the TAP Grant, which, again, I'm sure everybody knows what it is, but similar to like a streetscaping or enhancement grant, that's going to be a long and narrow road for a non-motorized path, ultimately eventually benching, lighting, things of that nature. And that's going to be a grant that's going to be over a million dollars. So those two grants together, this time around, from what I understand from our engineering department at, at the Road Department and from our general manager at the Road Department, they have specifically talked to the State of Michigan. And this time, we're supposed to have all the language correct. So in essence, this is to, for us to pass this so that the work can proceed and the grants can ultimately, from my perspective, be received. But we had to meet all these requirements and so. Any questions? Obviously, you see a lot of Road Department personnel here as well, if you have any other questions, too.
Questions, Commissioners? Phil?
Yes. Exactly what is the safe ground? Is this like sidewalks and so the kids can get to school safely or, it kind of implies that? I don't know if it's anymore or not.
Yeah, pretty much they're non-motorized multi-use paths. And they could be sidewalks as well, if they're just going to be a little bit narrower so for, non-motorized, it has to be 10-foot wide, and for sidewalks, it can be your standard to five-foot width on those.
So basically, the goal is a safe walking community, especially the children going to and from school?
Exactly. Mm-hmm.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, the Ann Arbor Road also helps legacy living also. They want that expanded because they're looking at developing the rest of the property around themselves. Is that true? Carl?
That's correct. Lloyd Gannon has bought the farm property and they're going to have quite a large campus there. That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we're going to ask for that. However, I just want to comment, one of the things that I think is important for the Board to recognize is, on both these grants, initially, I was a little concerned because it said that the county is going to be responsible for maintaining and funding and so forth, ongoing maintenance and repair. So I was a little concerned. But Leonie, you'll see there's two resolutions in here. In each case, Leonie has taken on the commitment of funding and maintaining these pedestrian pathways. So that covers us.
Yeah, that was the concern at the January meeting. And the grant dollars come to the Act 51 Agency, which is the DOT. It does not go to Leonie Township. And so that's why the resolution had to state that we were responsible for all of that. And then, of course, the follow-up resolution by Leonie Township indicates that they are indeed taking full responsibility for that construction.
Can I just make a motion to approve this?
For me?
Can I just make a motion? Make a motion, will you approve the resolution?
Support.
Motion carried. Entertain a motion on Resolution 1-15.6. Make a motion, will you approve the resolution?
Support.
We have a motion in support. Any questions to the motions? Madam Clerk, could you post the vote?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Resolution passed. JTOT education session?
At this time, we're going to have to bypass that. Christopher's not in attendance yet. He's on his way. In the meantime, Mr. Brown, if you want to come forward and give us the presentation for the 911 White Paper, please.
I'm here to present the findings from the White Paper of the 911 Management. We were asked to put together thoughts about whether the program should continue to report to the sheriff or to be moved under the Board, directly under the Board of Commissioners through the Administrator Controller. I'd like to recognize some of the, our 911 technicians that have come to the presentation today. They're the, really the unsung heroes of this program and things that make it happen. And we also have a lot of individuals that helped with this paper and feedback and the research. Chief Mike Curry from Napoleon Township, Matt Hines from the City of Jackson, Mike Jester of Blackman-Leone Public Safety, Chief Sean Lutz of Columbia Fire, Chief Tim McAldowney from Summit and Spring Harbor Fire, and Sheriff Fran, and I had several conversations, and Sheriff Fran and Under Sheriff Chris Cool and I were able to sit down a few days ago to review this in person and talk about it. And also Bob Bradley from Charlevois, Chabouigan, Emmett County Emergency Dispatch. Ooh, make sure I didn't miss anybody. So this is what we'll go over. This is the general outline of the presentation today, background, some legal factors, issues and challenges, the funding direction, alternatives, and recommendations. Everything in this PowerPoint is explained in more greater detail in the White Paper. And there's nothing new in this presentation, but it was added to Board Docs this morning, so you should have it in front of you. Jackson County was one of the first, I think, actually, I believe I've been told it was the first county-wide dispatch, consolidated dispatch. It's been on operation for more than 30 years. As you know, we have over 160,000 residents, and their calls in 2013, as reported by the state, were 138,541. We operate very lean with 19 technicians and one lieutenant supervisor. So that's just a brief explanation of what our program is in Jackson County. It cost us, it cost you, it cost the taxpayers about one and a half million dollars annually, a little above that for this, the most, the current year. The revenues we receive for 911 include surcharges on wireless phones, landlines, and voice-over Internet Protocol phones. We also have local contract for services with the City of Jackson. And the General County Fund supported it by $641,000 in 2014. So why now? Why are we talking about this? Well, it's come up several times in the past year and a half through the relocation study. Many questions came up as we researched that. We had a part in helping determine the location of that new facility. It came up during the Street Naming and Addressing Review Committee. There's been opportunities with peers of ours from different counties to collaborate together, so that it's come up in that forum. And also, we continue to hear complaints about the radio system from both fire and police. So that's the why we're talking about it. So the purpose of this paper is to discuss the driving and restraining, driving and constraining forces of the 911 Emergency Dispatch Program, reporting to the Administrator Controller versus the sheriff. We, in both, Mike and my own name are on this paper, have attempted to remain impartial. We did not go into this with any predetermined conclusions. And we recognize also that many of the decisions of the past, including the current sheriff and his predecessors, were made working cooperatively within the financial constraints to the county budget. In other words, we had tough times, the county... Make sure I didn't miss anybody. So this is what we'll go over. This is the general outline of the presentation today, background, some legal factors, issues and challenges, the funding direction, alternatives, and recommendations. Everything in this PowerPoint is explained in more greater, greater detail in the White Paper, and there's nothing new in this presentation, but it was added to Board Docs this morning, so you should have it in front of you. Jackson County was one of the first, I think, actually, I believe, I've been told it was the first county-wide dispatch, consolidated dispatch. It's been on operation for more than 30 years. As you know, we have over 160,000 residents, and their calls in 2013, as reported by the state, were 138,541. We operate very lean with 19 technicians and one lieutenant supervisor. So that's just a brief explanation of what our program is in Jackson County. It cost us, it costs you, it costs the taxpayers about one and a half million dollars annually, a little above that for this, the most, the current year. The revenues we receive for 911 include surcharges on wireless phones, landlines, and voice-over Internet Protocol phones. We also have local contract for services with the City of Jackson, and the General County Fund supported it by $641,000 in 2014. So why now? Why are we talking about this? Well, it's come up several times in the past year and a half through the relocation study. Many questions came up as we researched that. We had a, a part in helping determine the location of that new facility. It came up during the Street Naming and Addressing Review Committee. There's been opportunities with peers of ours from different counties to collaborate together, so that's come up in that forum. And also, we continue to hear complaints about the radio system from both fire and police. So that's the why we're talking about it. So the, the purpose of this paper is to discuss the driving and restraining, driving and constraining forces of the 911 Emergency Dispatch Program, reporting to the Administrator Controller versus the sheriff. We, in both, Mike and my own name are on this paper, have attempted to remain impartial. We did not go into this with any predetermined conclusions. And we recognize also that many of the decisions of the past, including the, the current sheriff and his predecessors, were made working cooperatively within the financial constraints to the county budget. In other words, we had tough times, the county sheriff worked with us to help get, and so if there's any complaint about where, why we are, where we're at in terms of staffing or size or funding, it's because they, they weren't cooperatively with the county administrator office. So just some of the legal factors, two levels. One, the state governance, there's a State 911 Commission. They are responsible for training, for setting operator standards. They're housed within the Michigan State Police Office, and they also disperse training funds for local technicians and anybody in the, operating in the center. And then, under local governance, the state is given the power to, the authority to organize the public safety answering points, otherwise known as PSAPs, through counties, cities, villages, and towns. So a PSAP, by definition, is the first point of reception for a 911 call. These are some of the issues as we work through the paper that came up, and they're included in the White Paper. The system infrastructure, supervision, efficiencies and inefficiencies, the co-employee relationship, collaboration opportunities, collective bargaining, and personnel. So I'll try to run through those briefly. This picture tells a lot. Honestly, this picture to the upper left is the old dispatch console, and the picture to the right is the new dispatch console. Standing just outside of the picture to the right is Mallory. She made sure to get out of the picture before I took it. But she, see, she has a very neat, clean desk. So the technology behind our current system is, the county uses a VHF system. They moved from a UHF system. It's approximately 10 years old, and at the time, it cost about $3 million. So projecting forward, we have no estimates about what a new system will cost, nor is there a clear answer on what it should look like or be. But if, to replace the whole thing, you can imagine that costs probably over $5 million by now, just from inflation. At that time, much of the equipment was provided to the local law enforcement and fire, including radios and mobile data computers. Some of those were through county general fund dollars, and then some of those were through Homeland Security Funds. Since then, local law enforcement's been responsible for updating their own equipment, as have we. Just recently last year, you might remember that you replaced the MDCs in the sheriff's cars through the county general fund, not through 911 funds. And that, that was a misunderstanding, that's why I pointed out amongst some of the fire chiefs, they believed that 911 funds were being used to update county vehicles, but yet not, not theirs, so. The reliability of the radio system is dependent on what part of the county the radio is in, the position of the radio, whether it's, the responder is in a structure or not, and also possibly equipment altering. These, like I said, this equipment was dispersed out over 10 years ago, and some of it, once it leaves their hands, it's difficult to control what they do with the radios and these devices, there's a lot you can do with them. Tower placement is costly and tricky. Every location poses its own unique, significant challenges. You might think, well, there's a bunch of water towers around the county, why don't we just stick them all on top of that? But yes, the sheriff could explain it in greater detail, as he did to me, but there's, there's complications because part of the antenna has to be on top and part of, has to be on the bottom, and even that restricts some of the signal, so. And what's known as narrowbanning, there was, the bottom line for, to narrowbanning is this requires you serve more towers. Just, this is just for illustrative purposes, these are not exact locations of radios, but basically, the FCC is the entity who required narrowbanning, and the last one was due in, was, happened in 2013. They estimate there was a 3 decibel loss of signal strength. And so just, this may be your towers before narrowbanning, and then, once the narrowbanning reduces the cone size of the signal, so it creates gaps in your coverage. So the, well, it was four or five years ago, we may have had a very good radio system that covered every single part. With the narrowbanning, it caused greater challenges, so you're continuing to have to respond to that. And there's talk that there would be further narrowbanning, those cones would get smaller, requiring more radios.
Question, Adam, how far down can they take the narrowbanning in a realistic sense? I mean, are we about maxed out as far as it's practical to take it, or could there be further narrowbanning in another five or 10 years?
My understanding, and some of the people from the Sheriff's Department may have a greater explanation, is that there's one more planned narrowbanning. And that affects really the, only the VHF. But what that does, the narrowbanning is it actually creates more channels on the radio, and that's the purpose of doing it, to make greater abilities for channels on it. But that's my understanding, that there's one more planned restriction or diminution of the signal.
So if we was going to attempt to remedy this situation, we shouldn't remedy now what we're experiencing with the next narrowbanning? We should actually jump ahead and do the next phase at the same time, shouldn't we?
Well...
Or is that technology not there?
No, it's not a matter of technology, because we're talking the same technology unless there was a different system, but they, they have a good grasp of where the holes are, and knowing that it's the same antennas that are going to be reduced, they're probably going to have a good idea of where that's going to create gaps again, too. So I feel fairly confident that the sheriff understands where the gaps are now and where they're going to be once it's further narrowbanded, but I don't know if he wants to add anything to that.
On me, too, yes. We are aware of the gaps, sorry. I keep in mind, this is the same system we use. I think a lot of people, when they look at something like this, they think, well, the sheriff has one thing that we're using, whatever's left, and it's actually, we're using the same system, all the same equipment. It's, comes down to money, in my opinion.
Yep.
Adam, it's kind of jumping ahead, but it's on the same thing Phil was asking you about. Is it not true that the state system, which is the 800 system, is not subject to narrowbanning, correct?
That is correct. The 800 system is not part of the narrowbanning.
And that's, I think, addressed later in your report, is it not? That's a potential for us.
That's right. And, you know, that is one of the, a possible solution, but it, it also has its own problems, and that's why I say there's no clear solution right now to it. We recognize some improvements from the location because we upgraded the technology in the center, and many of the people that I talked with in the research said they've had some improvement in the signal. However, saying that, there wasn't one of them that I talked with that said there are still problems that exist with the radio system, and, and many of them said that it's a matter of life and death, and, and it's only a matter of time until something happens that. I mean, just to give you an example, I think this was Chief McCall Downey that explained to me that when a firefighter is crawling and the antenna is down, that the, the signal may, is likely not to work than when it's upright. And a firefighter can be in that position frequently, so that poses a problem. But that's just something that inherent with this system, and there's something that's inherently wrong with almost all the options that we have available, so. I guess our only complaints was, up until now, there's not been any written plan for improve, improving the radio infrastructure. The sheriff and his staff were able to put something together in writing. I have it and can make it available to you. That is not, however, at this time, part of your capital improvement program, and to my knowledge, it hasn't, the needs haven't been shared with this board up until now. Like I said, there's no clear solutions because each solution has its own problem. One of the positive things that I heard from many of the people I interviewed was that of the vehicle repeaters. The sheriff purchased, I believe, four to be tried out in the field, and they've come with great success. So a vehicle repeater receives a signal from the main tower, and then it rebroadcast it inside the structure. And the main problem is the VHF system was not spec for in-building coverage, so it, it was never planned to be able to do that. However, these repeaters have, seem to be pretty successful. Some of the townships have gone out and purchased some themselves, those that can afford it. They are not very costly, they're $2,500 to $2,800 apiece. The other alternative is the 800 megahertz system, that's the, what the state uses. The strength of that is it's, it's always been good for law enforcement, but it's not typically been good for fire. However, we did look at some correspondence from our neighbors to the, to the east who said that there's been some recent innovations of making the 800 megahertz system work in building coverage. So that may be a possibility, but it's still in its infancy. Regardless of which way you go, any solution is going to be costly, and the, the base system you're still working with is at least 10 years old. You're either adding to it or modifying it, but we're not doing any type of wholesale change. So three, shifts, supervision, we have three shifts. The dispatchers work eight-hour shifts, so there's one, two, three. We have a full-time lieutenant director that's basically there during the day, but he is accessible at any time, as are the, they say they have supervision, it's just not onsite for those other two shifts. We heard from a lot of the local law enforcement, fire agencies, that they believe that to be a problem, that there wasn't anybody onsite to, to answer questions or to supervise. The sheriff's side of that is that there's always somebody available for them to call. If somebody had to leave, they'd obviously need permission to do that, they'd call the person on duty who's, they're directed to report to at that time. We recommended, when we looked at the location study, that we look to have a senior technician position of, at least so that there was somebody onsite at all times that was in charge. And of course, that, that comes with the cost, but we believe the benefits still outweigh the cost of that. One of our complaints of the system is that the experience of the supervisors, and the past three out of five have come in from the jail without any 911 experience. They, there's been high turnover in the director position, but I would not fault the sheriff's office for that. They've had a high turnover themselves in their command staff, as you know. The former sheriff went up to Lansing, and several of his captains are retired or left, and so there's been a lot of shifting that they've had to accommodate in their office. And, and so that's understandable. The, but like I said, the, we think there's a fault in the system where the, we bring somebody in that doesn't know anything about the job, and all of a sudden, you put somebody in and say you're in charge. There's a steep learning curve to all that technology and what happens on those phone calls. Like I said, there's broad agreement amongst all the local law enforcement people that we talked to, that there should be 24-hour onsite supervision. We were initially told that, well, there's part of the sheriff's office, there's things we can do that you can't do as, if it was under the Administrator Controller. So one of those was lean checks. So we talked with CCE, which is Charlevois, Sheboygan, and Emmett County Dispatch, Consolidated Dispatch. And they serve as what's called the POP, the Point of Presence for all law enforcement agencies in a three-county dispatch. So the law enforcement agencies call them for the lean check, and they do the lean check and then report back to that entity. So that doesn't appear to be an issue. There did, from my conversations with a number of the fire and rescue and law enforcement, say that there, there was problems with the ambulance dispatching and the timing. And we experienced that ourselves when we had an emergency, I guess it was about a year and a, year ago, year and a half ago. Problem is, you, you call, you give some information to our dispatch center, and then you're transferred over to Jackson Community Ambulance, where you give that information over again. And so there's a delay. I believe our dispatch has five questions they go through before they need to transfer you over, and then you give other information to the ambulance.
Going back a paragraph to the lean checks, am I correct in understanding what you said? My assumption is, is then because the CCE is an authority, that's what empowers them?
No.
So what empowers this entity that's not law enforcement to access the lean?
It's because they're a PSAP, a public safety answering point, that they're allowed to do that.
So other entities, other than law enforcement, can access lean? That, that's my confusion, that...
Yeah, if I can make a comment, the sheriff probably could also. There, there's others that have access. For instance, prosecuting attorneys have access, they're not law enforcement. Our local attorney does, has access, and although I'm sure there's lean traffic that goes through central dispatch, a lot of it is generated by the officer themselves in the car, on the MDC. I mean, we've given them the technology for that. Realistically, we scan the license and it runs the person. So I, I think a good portion of that traffic is done right in the car on the MDC. But there are other entities that do have lean access besides just police agencies.
The other complaint we heard from a number of law enforcement agencies was that oftentimes that when they have something available, you know, in their dispatch calls in their township, that the sheriff car is assigned when there's a township car available. And that's what they call the bidding system, where they're, the dispatch puts out a call for service, and the person, they're supposed to be the closest one, but I heard from a number of townships that the county cars were, came in from a distance, and then there's a county call later, which is a long distance away, and now the county car can't respond, but the town, when the township car could have taken that call. Conversely, several of them talked about also they being called out to be backup on a routine call outside of their township. Their comment to me were, was, if it's, if there's somebody in trouble, if it's a serious condition, we're there, that's not a problem, but when we're called to be backup to a traffic stop or something that's routine, they're pulling us out of our township and making us not available to answer the needs of their own constituents. So the co-employee relationship, as you know, Peter Cole talked about this a couple, last month, I guess, that we are co-employers with the sheriff, and so any program that we engage in, you know, under the sheriffs, means that the elected sheriff's supervisor, the county board commissioners, has the budgetary power. And the challenge with that is if we go into collaboration, now we have three partners in the agreement, that further complicates being able to make out a deal. We've been told we have other counties interested, but they don't want to have that third party, and there's the sheriff, they would only collaborate with, something with the board of commissioners directly, though. Just to give you an idea of where the PSAPs lie in, across Michigan, these, there's 65 county PSAPs, five multi-county PSAPs, three state PSAPs, and four university, and 78 that are in municipalities and cities, villages. I believe Mike's familiar with, with his past experience of being in a small city and running his own dispatch for a very small area. He can comment sometimes about, at least to me, about the inefficiency of that. Collective bargaining, under law enforcement, the dispatch is eligible for 312 binding arbitration, and, and they're entitled to retroactivity. Under Board of Commissioners... Under board commissioners' supervision, they're not eligible for that 312 binding arbitration, and there's no retroactivity. Having said that, this past contract, POLC, was the first to settle this year and did so prior to the expiration of the contract. And they've not exercised that binding arbitration since 2009. One of the problems that we've seen for a couple of years is in the employee progression. It seems to be like a dead-end job for a technician there. You come in, that's the only position that you're eligible for in 911. The sheriffs told me, though, that they've actually promoted some people from 911 into other uniformed services, it could be the jail or even on the road patrol, so... And there's other places in the county they could go, but within that specific service, there's really nowhere for them to go, because the dispatch director is, comes from the command staff, and there's no in-between position of, like the senior technician that we have talked about. The other problem we see is there's no way to guarantee an experienced director, when every time there's a change in the command staff, and a new director is going to come in, that's likely, more than likely, a uniformed officer. If it's been like the last three, they haven't had any experience in 911. And we believe there's professionals out there that have made this service their profession, and come in with credentials and do not have to seek them out over a period of years. The efficiency side, this is something, as I think I started out with, is that the sheriffs work collaboratively, the sheriff and the sheriff, his predecessor, with the county to control costs. And either way, if you look at the expense side of the equation and compare us with those counties that are comparable size, like Calhoun, very similar size to us, I would say Saginaw and Muskegon are similar size, but maybe not similar communities. We still do it very efficiently, if not cheap. I know there's some comments that Commissioner Elwell wants to make about the volume of calls, and he's welcome to do that at this time, or whenever he feels like it. But the challenge for us, when we look at that, is to try to make out, apply those same rules to all the comparables, too. So, but did you want to address that?
Yeah, if I could, Adam. I don't want to pass up an invite, anyway. Kind of like Carl. I appreciate the numbers that have been put together, and when I got to that point in the report that's up on the screen, I recognized that number of 134, 559, I think, or 599 from And I've mentioned typically during the sheriff's year-end report about the calls for service. And my perspective is coming from a 34-year police officer in the county. And I think there's a number of calls that are included in there, or a number of activities that are not really what the general public or we would consider as a dispatch or a call for service. And just speaking to one specific area is traffic stops. And the reality is that every time a police officer in the county makes a traffic stop, it adds a number to the system, which then counts it in that number as a call for service. I think that's inaccurate, and although we certainly do want to count the activity of our officers, each agency does, I don't think it's appropriate to count that as a dispatch. It's not an instance of a person calling into 911 saying, "I need help with this," or "I need a report taken on that." It's simply a traffic stop, and that allows, in my opinion, too much of the numbers being raised or lowered if there's less traffic stops. So, I went through and backed out, and in my course, it's no secret, I have a police agency that I run, and the same is true there, and the numbers from my agency, those total numbers show traffic stops. When I report my numbers to my three boards every month, I back the traffic stops out to show them how many actual complaints we handle, and then separately, how many traffic stops we make, because those are important, I don't want to minimize those. But when you go through countywide for each agency and back out the number of traffic stops, my numbers, and you could double-check the math on it, but I show 86,428 calls for service through dispatch, which is taking that number you see and backing out all the traffic stops for each police agency. And then, of course, it also includes all the fire department numbers that are given for runs that they make. It certainly affects or impacts that cost per call number. I would, if I had to guess, I would say that those other counties probably do not count traffic stops in their numbers. Maybe they do, maybe they don't, but I just think it's important to be clear what we're counting. I objected to counting traffic stops as part of the reporting numbers for dispatch for a long time, and I just accept the fact that it's there, and every time I see it, I do the math on it and back it out, so I know what the actual number is. And again, it's not to minimize the work that the deputies or troopers or road officers do, it's just to certainly count them in a different way. I don't think it's fair to count them as a dispatch. So, thank you for the opportunity to clarify that out.
Is there any way that we could find out if the data is being collected the same way, with the same criteria?
Yeah, and I understand, just a comment to Dave, I understand his argument there, and I don't disagree without, but it goes back to, could we find out? We probably could. We would have to ask for their data, or to call and have a phone call and say, "Do you count this? Do you count this? Do you count this?" And we did not have time to do that at the level of research, but it's probably possible.
Right. Adam, I think even if those other counties are reporting that, I don't know if that's ever an issue with them, but regardless of how it's counted, I think you'll find counties don't. But even if it is, I think it's fair for all of us to know what the numbers truly represent, even just for us.
I would just comment that while I understand what the numbers represent, it would be a significant task to try to call all those PSAPs and ask them, because they're going to have to do some work on it, they're in to achieve that, to get all that information. I'm not sure it really has a lot of bearing on this particular issue, if you will.
I'll say just a couple of things. Number one, I'm not saying we should, but I think it's relevant for us to know what these numbers represent, because I don't think many people would argue that it's not a call that's coming into central dispatch that's being dispatched. But on the same note, it took me literally a half hour to put these numbers in a spreadsheet for the whole county, with 140-some total numbers, so...
Yeah, and I think the bigger story here is, and I know this from having negotiated with the dispatchers this past year, they are very thin. They have trouble being able to take time off, the time that they rightly have in their contract. The expense side of it, well, the volume is maybe questionable, the expense side of it isn't, and we are drastically lower compared, comparison to our counterparts of it. And like I said, a lot of that's just from my personal experience bargaining with them and getting to know them a little bit better. This is a snapshot of our revenues that I talked about earlier. We separate in this chart out the landline versus the wireless. That is known as the county charge, though, the county surcharge. There's charges of fees and intergovernmental and other revenue. This is a histogram of, that's not a medical procedure, that's a statistical term, the histogram of all of the county charges. You see, we are at 44 cents. The white paper explains this. The board commissioners attempted to increase this to 80 cents in 2006, or '07, yes, 2006, I believe. And at that time, the legislature wanted to cap, they didn't want counties to be able to do this, have that authority. So, they put this cap in right about the same time. So, they actually had to go through the Public Service Commission to approve that increase, and the Public Service Commission said, "No, Jackson, you don't need that increase. You're going to, we're going to cap you at 44 percent, or 44 cents." Is that arbitrary? I don't know how they came to that number, but that's where we were. And from that point forward, it requires a vote of the people to increase that number. But you see from the next slide, we are well below the state average in the county surcharge. We're operating with 44 cents per phone line. And so, some of that money is retained for capital to build more antennas, a lot of it was used to outfit the new dispatch center that was, had to be saved for a number of years. But this slide shows you the amount that goes over to support operations, and then the total cost of those operations. So, in 2014, we received 1.5 million. We took $816,000 from 911 fees to support operations. Many of the counties we look at are able to completely fund their operations and their capital side with phone line surcharges. We're not able to do that. We are subsidizing that by, on the operating side, by $600,000 to $700,000 a year. And you could argue that there are things that we're not able to do on the infrastructure side, because we're putting that much towards operations.
Adam, I appreciate you taking my call yesterday on this specific point on the revenue, because I had, as you know, gone to the state website, and a lot of the information's on there every year, and I was looking for more of a breakdown. It's about 1.1 million we receive in total 911 fees of variety. Nice picture, Adam.
Thanks.
So, based on what you had up on the graph of, I think, 800 and some thousand being transferred over from the 911 fees, that leaves about $285,000 that goes into a capital account, I assume? Is that accurate?
It is, yeah.
Okay, and that's essentially the account or the fund that paid for the new 911 center, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And do we know ballpark what's left in there? And of this 285, that'll be going in there probably every year, by the looks of the history of it, maybe dropping every year. That's not part of a capital improvement plan, or is it?
This is the money they would use for that. And my understanding, and under Sheriff Cole might want to explain the numbers to his satisfaction, but the highlighted row in yellow, and I can send this out to you, I didn't put it in the presentation, is the amount that they've retained in the past and each year for the capital. So, in '14, there was 285,000. My understanding is that account was depleted pretty far down for the dispatch center, and they're almost starting from anew, but... Under Sheriff, did you want to correct anything there?
There's two issues you're confusing, and they're separate of it in themselves. There's the county charge, which flows back in, which is taken back to the general fund in its entirety, and then there's the wireless charge that is collected by the state in every wireless device, and then is remitted back to the counties on a per-population basis. The wireless fund is what paid for the 911 upgrades. What is left in that fund, after we just recently covered RIC's costs for the 911 centers, various items, are about $160,000. That money is planned for a communications tower in Concord at the Row Commission Garage, and also a lease of a tower in Anadega, unless this committee decides to go a different direction with 911 and the radio system.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. So, yeah, and I appreciate Dave asking the question. I had to hunt down one of my spreadsheets to give to him, but I can share this with you later in the day, though. Thought you might like to see that now, though. Okay, so, we're kind of wrapping up here. Your alternatives here, really, you can do nothing, remain under the sheriff. I'm sure we could work more collaboratively with the sheriff to see some of the things we want done, but you're still likely going to have dispatch run by command staff, and in our mind, that's a person coming in seeking credentials, not a person coming in with credentials that might immediately know what to do. Or you can move this under your control through the administrative controller. What we would do is hire a professional 911 director with their credentials and experience to run that center. We believe somebody with that experience would come in knowing immediately what to do, recognizing things.
Adam, to me, one of the first considerations I'd want to look at would be the cost. Is there a cost difference between one or the other?
Yes, this, it's not free. We, in the paper, and thanks for asking, it's a fair question. We estimate, you know, higher director-level position from, well, lieutenant, we're probably talking about an extra $15,000. We also recommended the senior technician, that's probably, that's going to be an increase in a grade, that's likely to be probably another $5,000 for at least two people, perhaps three. So, we're looking at additional $25,000, just in rough estimates. It's not free, good question.
Adam, not until you're done, but, and I know down there Sheriff has been up here, but if the sheriff would like to speak, I certainly would like to hear from him.
Yeah, if you want me to roll through this, the ending slides, and we afforded him the opportunity to read the paper in our office and then comment, and we had a good discussion. I made a lot of changes based on his comments, and obviously, there's still some items that we're going to disagree on, we agreed to disagree, so he'd probably want to comment on those things, so... So, these are our recommendations. After talking with folks and doing the research about it, we recommend that the administrative controller operate this as another department under the board of commissioners. To hire a professional director, move to 24-hour onsite supervision, and which, both those things open the door for further collaboration opportunities. The radio system, there's a lot of disagreement amongst all the users about the level of reliability, about the technology that should or shouldn't be used, and there needs to be a group convened, probably need technical expertise on that group, that's a third party. And it appears to be there's some training issues, too, with the equipment on the receiving end, not the dispatching end. Also, we recommend that the sheriff's new plan for dispatch improvements be incorporated into the county improvement program, the capital improvement program, that really should be a part of the, I think, a misunderstanding that we've tried to reframe over the past five years, is that the capital improvement program is not just for county general fund items. It is for all capital improvements, regardless of the funding source, and those items need to come through this board, so they should be a part of that capital improvement program. And I guess if we have one complaint to make, it's the fact that this board did not know about what the needs are in terms of a capital improvement program. A possibility, you can create another ad hoc committee to further explore these issues with some representation of the law enforcement or fire community, if the board wants an additional recommendation. And we do recommend that this board authorize the voters to consider adding to the county surcharge. We believe with the, and this is, again, would need more analysis, but very roughly, another 50 cents per line per month would likely fund both the operating and the capital plan. That's $6 a year for each phone that you have. We think that's reasonable. So, that concludes my recommendations, and met your pleasure.
On the cost of operation, Adam, it looks, on the surface, the administrator-run system is more costly, by $20,000 a year, you're saying. However, to be clear, if we was going to collaborate with another county, it has to be run by the administration to get their buy-in, is that correct?
Every indication that we have, no, it's not an absolute for sure. I mean, the two sheriffs could talk together and decide they're going to help each other out, but the people that we've talked to have indicated that they're not interested in having that multiple parties to the agreement. in having that multiple parties to the agreement.
So in that light, we could really cut our costs by having a partner in a 911 system.
We could save our own cost or, and great potential to save others if you look at the cost of operations.
Thank you.
Adam, back to that issue, though. Just because certain counties are stipulating they want the control in a certain manner doesn't mean all counties would make that request. Isn't that correct? Legally, there's no, nothing prohibiting us from continuing the way we are or changing the management, the overseeing responsibility, correct?
That's correct.
Make a point here that, and certainly, Adam, I appreciate your presentation. It's from administrator's perspective and all the time you've spent in discussion with the sheriff and such, certainly commended. You know, part of my concern is, and this is actually Lenawee County Commissioners or Hillsdale Commissioners, actually both, who've actually approached me because I'm on, I'm on some committees that they are on, and they've come to me, and this item has been discussed for a long time in regards to any potential collaboration, merger. And, you know, I guess what concerns me from these commissioners, from these commissioners that have talked to me, specifically Lenawee, the quote is, "If your sheriff stays, we won't do anything." And I just have a real problem with that. It's almost like, it's almost like, "We may," and it's still a "may." "We may merger or collaborate with you, but if your sheriff stays, we won't." And quite frankly, I have a real problem with that kind of attitude from them. So just my perspective.
And just to be clear, I don't think, you could probably validate this, I don't think it's that they have a problem with a specific individual, it's more of the system.
Correct. It's not, they have no problem with our sheriff, him as a person, him as a law enforcement officer. They have the problem, the problem is that, if you will, our sheriff would be ahead of 911, if you will, and their people, if you will, would be working underneath him. So that's more of that, yes. Just to speak on that for a minute, and I don't speak for anybody from Lenawee County, but you need to understand they went through a rough process with their dispatch down there. They got litigated and arbitrated, and they ended up having, being forced by the court to move one dispatcher out or one dispatch director out and bring another one in. So there are some political dynamics to it, but I've got deep thoughts on the whole issue. I do support the Administrator's Office recommendation. I appreciate the thoroughness of it. I appreciate the great job the dispatchers do. They, and none of my comments are meant towards them at all. I greatly respect the fact that they're in a high-pressure environment all the time, and it's not a job that many people would want, and overall, I think they do a great job. I think a big part of it, for me, is what we have now as an inefficient delivery of services. And again, that's not the fault of any one person, but it's a duplication of services. That was touched on in the report by another chief, and that's not good for the expenditure of county resources or local resources, and it's not good for officer safety. Many times when you have a car with county-wide authority, which could be a state car or county car tied up in one municipality handling an emergency or non-emergency call, then they're not available as available for backup or for emergencies in other areas, and it's just inefficient delivery of services that there is some control over by dispatch, I think, not the dispatcher, but dispatch, and by us, and hopefully, we'll be able to address that manner of dispatch. My personal opinion is, calls in the county should be dispatched, the same for any municipality that has a police department, same as they are for the city of Jackson. County and state cars do not enter into the bidding equation in the city of Jackson, and they should not in any municipality that has a police department in service. And that's the way it's done, at least in Lenawee County, I believe Washtenaw County and all our other surrounding counties. If we were to check, we would find that. I think there are a large number of things that rest just below the surface as issues, and again, it's not to any specific person, a group of people, but issues that would be better addressed if the dispatch center were run through the Administrator's Office. I'm supportive of that, and I think as you've talked to the chiefs, both fire and police in the county, you've probably come to that same conclusion that you've detailed in your report. So, and I'd be happy to speak to specific incidents as examples offline with anybody that would like to. Thank you.
Phil? It's my understanding that Lenawee dispatch system is run by the administration, not by their sheriff.
Unless they've changed anything, it's currently run by their sheriff. They, our understanding was they are building a new facility and wanted to consider whether they should include a dispatch center or exclude it. That's how the opportunity provided, presented itself, but our last, most recent understanding is that it's run by the sheriff.
Oh, I, it was under the presumption it was run by an authority that ran their dispatch.
No, Hillsdale County has an authority, dispatch authority, I don't know the exact name of it, but Mike and I were able to go down there and talk with them at one point, and there's a number of ways, they're outlined in the paper of how you can organize 911. You can use an authority under the Board of Commissioners, under a sheriff, multi-county authority. There's lots of different options. The state law is pretty lenient about how you organize it.
So Lenawee County Sheriff does operate his own 911?
That's our understanding.
All right, thank you. I'm mistaken then?
Adam, can I interject something? I think what they actually have in Lenawee is called an emergency telephone dispatch board that has members appointed by the Board of Commissioners, and I think some of the members are specific by MCL states who's a member of it. The center itself, I think everybody knows who runs it, he's a lieutenant with the sheriff's department, but I believe that's by virtue of either the lawsuit or who they've chosen to hire as their dispatch director there. It just ends up working out that that's who it is. But they have what's called an emergency telephone dispatch board with a number of members on it that runs dispatch, oversees dispatch.
And a couple of questions for you. Adam, you have a pretty good list of recommendations here, you know, hire a professional director, 24-hour onsite supervision, open door for further collaboration, and then the talk about getting a increase in the 911 fee on the cellphones to help fund our capital as well as operational. We can, we could choose to do some of these things and still leave it within the sheriff's department, correct? Ask the sheriff to hire a professional director, approach the community about the possibility of the 911 cellphone charge increase, things like that, correct?
That's correct.
I'm glad you brought that point up because I, one of the things I didn't mention is the radio system in the county. I think that came ringing through in the report, and again, this is not the fault of the sheriff or the sheriff's department. They've got an old system that they've been trying to keep up with it, and it's been expensive, and there is a huge concern of officer safety out there with the system that we have. So something, in my opinion, has to be done with that. I don't necessarily think continuing with this current system we have is the best thing. There was consideration given at one time a number of years ago to the state's 800 system. There's a huge amount of benefits to that, and Adam knows what some of them are, but I think we should be giving consideration to that instead of putting money into this old system that we have. Thank you.
That's a...
Daniel, did you have a comment? Or did you want to speak first?
Just to respond, that's a comment I heard from a lot of the chiefs, is that they feared that we'd be putting a lot of money into the system and, at the end of the day, not seeing any positive results from it.
I guess I would just be curious to know what the, what the sheriff is, his opinion on what he would like to see happen with the 911 center. I also had a couple of other questions directed for him as well.
Sheriff Rand, are you willing to?
Thank you, Adam, for all your work on this.
Thank you, Steve, for speaking here.
Yeah, pretty robust report you prepared. And before I say anything, I want to make sure that everybody knows our dispatchers are in a real awkward spot. Anytime you talk about their futures, and I've tried to reassure them that regardless of what happens, their jobs are safe, they're well-respected, they're very important, they're mission-critical jobs that they hold, and I just hope everybody's sensitive to that because really what we're talking about is people's lives, people's careers, and I think that's paramount in this case. With respect to the 800 megahertz system, we need to, I hate to keep going back to history lessons, but Kent did some of that, and some of this is only what previous administrations have done. When we looked at this radio system back in '04, '05, there was a lot of homemade security money out there, and we were trying to decide what we were going to do, how would we, how we would proceed. The recommendation I gave, because I was in charge of emergency management 911 at the time, was that we go to an eight, forgive me, Tim, that we go to an 800 megahertz system. Worked great. Police would love it. Firefighters would not. The then-director of Blackman Public Safety recommended against it and worked hard to make the point that the 800 megahertz system would not work for fire service. There were some tests that were done, specifically in Leoni Township, as I recall, and the radio coverage was not adequate. That was probably the last nail in the coffin for the 800 megahertz system coming to Jackson County. And keep in mind, this system would not be provided to us by the state. It would be, what they wanted was us to invest in their system, which meant constructing towers, adding a per-mic fee, which for some of the, especially the rural fire departments, that would be a fee for every pager, for every radio, mobile radio, portable radio. At the time, that fee was $200 or $300 a year. Multiply that times however many radios you have. So just keep those things in mind, and the decisions that were made back then is why we are where we are now. Narrowbanding, we knew it was coming. We tried to address those issues as best we could. Obviously, it's not a perfect system. It's worked well. It's served us well. We don't have so much invested that we can't walk away from it, but there is a lot invested. We still have towers that could be used on an 800 megahertz system, but again, we're going to have to revisit the fact that there will be annual fees from the state of Michigan to use their system. With respect to JCA, a lot, I've heard this, this has been bantered around a lot, too, but bear in mind, again, back in the 90s, before, before most, well, really all dispatchers that we currently have working in our facility were here, we used to use flip charts. You called 911, and they'd say, "Oh, Commissioner Duckham, you're choking." And then they flipped through the chart, and they would, they would, one, they were trained to do it, but also they were supposed to use these flip cards. That's how 911 is handled for medical emergencies. We got away from that so that, and this is just to clarify some of the points here, so that JCA had come to us and said, "We'll take care of that for you. Will you transfer the medical calls to us?" And is there a delay? Yes, there is a slight delay, but who you have on the other end is a medical first responder that's answering the questions with regard to a medical emergency. So there is a slight delay. Is it perfect? Maybe not, but the alternative would be have those people in-house and have those people, and whereas now, we have JCA, the only ambulance service in Jackson County who's dealing with the issue, is going to be responding to the medical issue. Fire service doesn't like it. I understand that because they don't get all the best information all the time, but that's why we are where we are. Lean, and I didn't mean to infer that lean couldn't be done through a PSAP, the lean work, the lean board, if I'm not mistaken, it's the CCE where you were from, I think a lean board has to be created to oversee lean if a PSAP's running it, not under the auspices of a police department or sheriff's office. That's only a point of clarification, again. Closest car concept, which is something Commissioner Elmer referred to a while back, is the closest car goes to the call here in Jackson County. We have GPS onboard several units that have been tested, and we're just waiting for, to coordinate with IT to get that fully operational countywide. That would resolve a lot of those issues, but it would still be a closest car concept. And I guess the question I would pose is, we have a new 24-hour contract with Norval Township, does that mean Norval doesn't get service from the county, except when the county's working the contract? I don't think, as commissioners, you want someone not to respond to your area, whether it be a car deer, whether it be an armed robbery, not to have the county respond to a particular area only because there's a township working that area, you still pay county taxes. I do agree there's some redundancies in that. I had to correct, I know the post commander and I have had this conversation, he had the same feelings, but the problem you have is the people, for instance, we have assigned to Summit Township, can't handle all of the Summit Township calls. We need assistance from the county, assistance from the state police. Those are issues. With respect to them backing up other units, I know that was mentioned in the report, if a township chooses not to back up other units, we'll try to make those adjustments in the 911 system and try to let dispatchers know. I would ask that with respect to the previous closest car concept, if there is a township supervisor or a board that does not want the county sheriff patrolling their township, that they let us know that, too, and we will try to, try to oblige them. Wireless surcharge, that was another issue that came up. I just want to correct, a minor correction, that all of the service that we do on the radio system, the parts that need replacing, like we just had, it's called a MUCs, don't ask me what that stands for, I have no idea, but it had to be replaced last week, all the things that we do to the vehicles, the radio repair, the lightning strikes we take, all the things that we do comes out of that wireless money. Those are the, that's what we use to pay for those services in addition to sometimes accumulating the monies to fund capital projects. And with that, I guess I would open up to questions. I know, Mr. Mahoney, you had questions for me.
So do you think that it would be...
I could answer that a number of ways. I guess what I would say is this, what you really have is four professional 911 directors because Captain Volk has experience in the 911 center. I have experience in the 911 center. Under Sheriff Cool has experience in the 911 center. And then Jason Hammond, who is now, frankly, I think he's done, when it comes to technical and knowing the system, he knows it better than anybody in this county. He comes in at 3:00 in the morning when something goes down and needs to be reset, instead of calling ROCOM, our vendor that fixes radios, he can come in and reset those things. He's been trained by the radio vendor. He's very technically savvy. When he's out of town, when a director is out of town, who's going to run the 911 center then? And anytime there's an emergency, whether it's Jason's out of town or not available or anything occurs, there's the under sheriff, myself, and Captain Volk, all who have knowledge. And I'll use my predecessor's comment that he always liked having a deep bench, and that's what we do. We try to have a deep bench. We shuffle people around. We have people knowledgeable in the jail, 911, road patrol, and we move them around. And to say they're not professionally trained is inaccurate. They go to staff and command school at lieutenant level. They have training from Michigan State Police Leadership Development and Supervisory Development courses. It's a requirement of my staff, and I started this. Dan put the ball in motion, but I have lived up to the obligation that you will not be a lieutenant in my organization without a bachelor's degree. That's another stipulation we have. So to say they're not professional managers, I don't think is accurate.
I just want to make a comment in regards to that. I don't think that Daniel's implying that you don't have professionals. I think the implication is, realistically, if Jason's not there, are you personally going to go there and run 911? Probably not.
Untrue. I've been there how many times?
Like, for a weekend at a ti, you guys continue to shuffle your guys? I mean, I'm just asking. I don't know. You know, I don't ever go there. I've been there twice in my life, so...
I know, and I didn't mean to imply that Daniel was saying that. I was going back to the comment in the document, so I apologize if I made you feel that way, but that was kind of the answer to my question. I, we're in there all the time, whenever there's a critical incident, because frankly, these folks, when there is a critical incident, we all come in. I come in, the under sheriff. incident, we all come in. I come in, the undersheriff. We don't have a lot of, I mean, Jackson County, I think we do it right. We're responsible. We, we, we do do it on a shoestring, to use your term, Steve. So we, we do do it very, probably as economically as we can. Did you just get that to me? So.
Obvious that you guys are pretty efficient, and more efficient than all the counties around us, so I don't think, I think that's, that's a big kudos to you and your, your department.
Well, really, everybody here. It's, it's, everything we do in Jackson County, it's not like we have, you know, caviar tastes here in Jackson County. And I, I think maybe it's time to, to, to take another look at that, and then decide what we want to prioritize, and what we want to fund, and what we don't want to fund, I guess. But we, we do pride ourselves on being very efficient as far as operations go, and I think that the numbers bear it out. Yes, sir?
Are there any, are there any challenges that you, that you say that, that you think that would arise from this being taken over by the Board of Commission versus staying in your department?
You know, I, I don't want to get too far into the weeds on this, but to have a supervisor, a working supervisor, I'm not sure that's the solution, because what we're talking about is giving a pay increase to dispatch staff, which I'm not against. But now you're having them handle supervisory duties while they're answering 911 calls, which to me is a distraction. I, I have some apprehensions about that. You know, we do borrow a lot of supervision from, from my staff, sergeant level and on up, day, on a daily basis for 911. And, you know, frankly, I, I don't, again, I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but that was one of the, if you'll recall, one of the, the things I highlighted with respect to moving out to Chana Road, is that I'd have supervision staff there 24/7. We'd, we'd have some of those things covered. And it's all because of the way we operate in Jackson Counties, because we do things as, as, ah, we're cheap in Jackson, let's just put it that way. We just do it cheap. And that was, that was the goal then. And if that changes, or if we have a better solution, I'm, I'm for it. And if it's means enhancing the radio system, I'm for it. How can I be against it? So.
Sheriff, in, in a perfect world, I'm using a fix-it-once-and-fix-it-right approach. In a perfect world, if you got a new radio system in 30 days, what would you pick?
I couldn't, I, I can't answer that question without testing the 800 megahertz system, because it's either going to be 800 megahertz or VHF. And if we can't page fire service off of 800 megahertz, and I've heard there's a solution from Motorola now to do that, but then you're married to Motorola. So I, I can't answer that question without testing the system, like we did back then. I mean, 11 years ago, we did the same thing. We tested everything, we went through all this, and that was the decision. Then there was a committee set up to, to decide these things.
That was another question, is could we use a, a repeater, in-car repeater for the 800 megahertz system, so the fire would benefit?
I would suspect that's possible, yes. I, I don't know why it wouldn't be possible for an 800 megahertz system, but I, I don't know that for a fact.
In, in the area I represent, I'm sure other commissioners get complaints, but being out in the far southwest, Norval, far edges of Columbia, I, I hear this often, from the fire chiefs too. And I, I kind of like, would like to look at the situation, look at it once, fix it right the first time, and have the issue behind us. So maybe it is a study that needs to be done. And it may take a mileage, or I don't know what it will take, but, you know, in essence, it's my constituents' safety, it's the officer's safety. You respond to a, a domestic violence call, call. If the officer needs assistance, he can't call for a timeout and ask to use their phone, because his radio don't work. So, and the fireman, you know, inside, if he's stuck and needs help, he needs to be able to communicate. And I think that's one of the most essential services that radio system does, and 911 would do. And I'd really like to look at it, fix-it-once-and-fix-it-right type approach. So whatever you could glean, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sheriff, back to the 800 meg system just for a second. Mike Jester was part of that testing years ago. He was assigned a specific area of the county, and they all went out with portable radios in the cars. And my discussions with him were that every point that he went to, the prep worked. They didn't get out of the car and go into a building. That might be a different issue. And as far as the fire service, I've heard the same thing. That Motorola has already tested 800 radio capable of paging, but I think what they do in Wasna right now, they retain just the paging ability on VHF, page out the fire department, they get the page, and then they go to their 800 meg radio and communicate with, with dispatch then. So that does seem to work. The other benefit is that Wasna County, I think, put 12 towers up, or six towers up for the 800 meg system. Calhoun County has some up, I think, one in Albion. And I believe that if we did go 800, then you'd have the benefit of putting those towers into your bigger picture of your areas that you could cover. And there's some just south of the county line that I think work as well. Switching gear just for a second, it was mentioned in the report, I think, about the city police.
Can I comment just real quickly on that before I lose this thought? We have three towers currently in Jackson County that are state 800 megahertz towers, and you mentioned that Wasna has 12. I believe they spent between 20 and 30 million dollars to get that system operational. And the other comment I would make with regards to that is that now you're talking about maintaining, being on 800 megahertz, and maintaining a VHF network for fire paging, unless I misunderstood what you're talking about. So that still means maintaining the system we currently have, in addition to joining the 800 megahertz system, and contributing to it with additional towers. That's.
Yeah, I have a little bit of knowledge about the radio system, and I think clearly that you probably could get by with one or two towers, I would think, on paging, maybe not on communication back and forth, but with the fire pagers. I was part of testing those at one time, even outside the county. But, and I, I don't know if Adam talked with a guy from Wasna or not, but it seems like they spent 12 million, and it was either six or 12 towers they put up. And I'm not saying that's the end-all, be-all, the 800 system, but I think it should certainly be considered, especially knowing it's not subject to the narrowbanding. And other municipalities have gone to it and are happy with it. But back to another point pointed out in the report was the fact that the city police, or the city of Jackson contributes, I think, what, 60,000 or 65,000 to operations. And, you know, I'll say upfront that I don't necessarily support that. I don't think the city of Jackson should have to pay for dispatch services. I know that there was an agreement that they do that, and I think there's language in there that any other community that rises above 25,000 would have to pay a fee as well. I don't think you can, or we can hold other communities be bound by that agreement. But to me, it's just as simple as the 911 fees that come in, come in for all phones in the county, including in the city. And I think just dispatch services are part of what the county should provide to them. I doubt that 65,000 fully funds a full-time person and benefits anyway. And I, seems like I recall seeing there was mention that there was a dedicated dispatcher for the city. I don't know if that's true or not, or if it's necessary, but if they were not paying that fee, and we were still covering all the calls in the city, what would it entail for us?
That's another one of those legacies that we, that, that we've inherited, all of us. I was in the room when that negotiation took place between Bill Ross and, or Portis and Dan Hines, and I don't know how you obligate a township to pay either, but that was not, I, I was just kind of ears in the room at the time. But I will say, with respect to why the city pays, in, back in the day, when, when, if you'll recall, for a brief period, the city broke away from, from 911, and when they did, a short time later, they came back, and they were back in our system. That's when it went down in the salary report, in, in the sheriff's office years ago. And at some point in time, they negotiated, the city wanted the portion of the surcharge that we have to be applied towards what they ought, because when they originally came back, the, the cost was something on the order of a quarter of a million dollars, something like that. That's what they were paying to us. And they wanted, they wanted to prorate that and use the amount of the surcharge that they, they figured their city residents paid. And there was a balance. And the balance was, at the time, 25 and change. And, and over the years, it's, it's crept up to 60, $65,000 mark. But that's why they pay what they pay. I can't disagree with anything you said with respect to that, though.
Well, I, I guess I'm sure the administrator's office wouldn't like it, because it'd be a $65,000 hole in the budget, or 60,000. But again, if it comes up for renewal, I don't recall one that expires, but I won't be supporting it. I just don't think the city should be charged separately for dispatch services.
It goes into perpetuity. It's forever. No, just wanted to, I.
Add up, nothing lasts forever.
Specify this in the report, but the city does, does ask for a value-added service there. If you go there to the dispatch center and, and see the service though, they have one. That's the city dispatcher right there. They have different, their own protocols that they require to be followed. So if they don't want to, if they don't pay, they need to be treated like any other municipality receives the same answering, answering protocol than, just like anybody else.
Adam, do you have an example of how the, or maybe the sheriff does, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but how would the protocol change? I mean, what could be that much different? Obviously, they're not dispatched on the closest car concept. They're, they work in sections, but I mean, what else would change protocol-wise for them?
Well, when they came back, that was, they, they, they had a list of, for lack of a better term, demands, that they wanted that. And, and they were paying for a service at the time. And, and in some regards, the city handles a volume of calls nearly equal to the balance of the county, or at least they did. They're, they're a little lower now. When you combine their police and fire, especially, their fire department's very busy, their police department's very busy. So they had a dedicated station, and they had a list of protocols. And their protocols, if you were at the city dispatch console, are different. But to your point, I, I think it would be great if we did the same thing countywide. That would be really great. I, I don't know that, that will get us away from having a, a city dispatcher and a, and a county dispatcher, but.
Volume of calls for the city is going to really naturally mandate you have someone dedicated to that. Accurate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for getting up here, Sheriff, and being bombarded here. I, just a couple of things. Commissioner Elwell made a comment about not speaking for Lenawee, and I certainly wasn't speaking for Lenawee. Actually, Lenawee and Hillsdale spoke to me. And I can assure you, they had no problem with me sharing the information I did. Another factor here in this whole thing, you know, there's a comment here that to ensure that we have a professional director, that this should be put underneath the control, if you will. I use the word "control" of our county administrator. I won't go into a lot of detail because of timing, but I totally disagree with that. I believe that we have a sheriff who can make sure that any potential current deficiencies, issues we have, there's several things on this document that, that certainly need to be looked at, but there's no reason why our sheriff could do that. From my perspective, there's not anybody in this room, and, and I'm sure somebody could argue with me, that could come close to his knowledge of 911. Okay? He has been there way before he got elected sheriff, and he has a wealth of knowledge, and he is more than willing to correct what needs to be corrected. So we need to keep that in mind. He has more than the knowledge about this whole thing than we do. Next thing, he was elected, he was elected by the people to be the sheriff of this county. Part of that responsibility that he was elected to by the people was his role, his responsibility with 911. And I'm not going to circumvent or step into a situation that he was elected to be part of. I just won't do it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Again, Sheriff Rand, thank you very much. Under Sheriff Cool, thank you very, very much. We appreciate all your help on this, and you'll be contacted as we go forward with what decision the board makes, most definitely. Michael, you have a comment about the education session?
Yeah, I, I would propose that we postpone that till next month. I mean, obviously, it's something we do every month regardless, just the topic changes. I'm sure Christopher, I think he wanted to introduce someone, which is fine, but rather than spend the next, another half an hour at this meeting, we can do this next month, that portion of it. Thank you.
Good morning. Well, I had a presentation prepared, which we'll do next month, on shared services for Calhoun and Jackson, highlighting what we do and why we do it between the two agencies, and some of the changes that we're making. This morning, I was planning as part of that to introduce our new project managers. Project management is really at the heart of everything we do, and some diagrams that I've prepared in the presentation, which is uploaded in Board Docs, if you glance through later, shows a Venn diagram of engineering, operations, and administration. And right in the center of that is a lavender circle. Lavender's one of my favorite colors. And Sean and Leslie are part of that. So just a quick introduction. Sean has been with Jackson County Department of Transportation for 21 years. Is that right, Sean?
That's right.
And you've been an operator for 15 years, so he brings practical knowledge to the table. And he's been newly appointed as our project manager. He comes out of our engineering division, where he's been there for six years. So this is really an effort to dedicate resources to our townships. Our 19 townships deserve customer service that is on a VIP level. So that's really how things are going to change internally. His passions and interests are hunting, fishing, and enjoying two grandchildren. Did you want anything more, Sean?
No, that's pretty much the life right there.
Sean's been a real positive force in our organization, and I don't know if you want to say anything about our changes we've made recently, Sean?
In the past, we had somewhat of a shotgun approach with our townships, and it wasn't working either for the townships or ourselves. Jerry started, and Christopher kept going, the notion that we should have one point of contact for those townships. That is now me. And we've also kind of incorporated that into other areas of the road commission, our internal projects, federal aid projects, and other things. Hopefully, one point of contact, one flow-through spot will make scheduling coordination much easier. Also, we're merging over with Calhoun in a lot of these areas, and Leslie and I will be working together on a lot of things.
Thank you, Sean. Leslie Barnaby is in her second day, believe it or not, and she comes from the Kalamazoo County Road Commission. You have two and a half years there. And she, she worked at the front desk, basically, as administrative assistant, fielding phone calls and so forth. But I've known Leslie all, all during that tenure, with my interactions with Kalamazoo County Road Commission. I'm a Kalamazoo County resident, in fact. And so I was real delighted, really delighted when she applied for the position in Calhoun. It's the equivalent of Sean in Calhoun. So Leslie's background is, she has a bachelor's in psychology, which is a helpful thing, I think, for our customer service initiatives with our 38 townships between the two counties. And she earned that while she was working full-time, which is very impressive. So besides her bachelor's degree, she spends time with friends and family, and loves to play with her dog. And she has a brand-new hobby, which I'll announce for her. I know she's humble. She just got announced, literally within the last hour, that she's accepted to the Masters of Public Administration program at Western Michigan University. So.
Thank you.
Did you want to say anything, Leslie?
Honestly, I'm just very excited. I am still learning what I'm going to be doing, but I'm pleased to meet all of you, and hope to interact with you more in the future. So thank you for having me today.
Really, Leslie comes, you think of Sean and Leslie as on a teeter-totter. She has different strengths, and Sean has strengths, and together, they complement each other. Sean was on the selection committee, and it was unanimous decision to have Leslie come on board. So she's here today, and they're going to go back to the office and collaborate on projects here in Jackson. And Sean is busy helping Calhoun as well. So, any questions? Thank you very much.
Any other items?
Mike, anything special?
Mike, anything special? Okay. Public comment? You've arrived at the second opportunity for public comment?
Peter Bormuth, I'd like to address the airport issue in the airport presentation by Ken Mall. I, originally, when I heard of this proposal and what I considered an outrageous expense of taxpayer dollars, I went and I saw Ken, he was kind enough to take about an hour of his time and give me a presentation of the history and pretty much what you've all had as well. And then I asked him for some follow-up information on all the leases and all the properties that were purchased, and he provided that as well. I'd like to say that if there was going to be organized opposition to this project, I would have been organizing it and stopping it as best I could. However, through my conversations, I've come to the conclusion that this project is required to continue to have an airport that can service Jackson County and its citizens and its businesses. And so any lingering thoughts that I might be in opposition to this project can be quelled. I am supportive of what's taking place, and I'm hopeful that this financing will come through and that we will have an airport that can function in Jackson County for the next 20, 30 years. Thank you.
Other public comment? Seeing none, Commissioner comments. Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry.
My name's Jeff Shinskey. I've been a dispatcher with 911 for six years, and I just want to comment on the administrator controller taking over from the sheriff. I believe, and I don't speak for all of us, but I do speak for most everybody who I work with, as a team with the sheriff's department, we work flawlessly. We can, we work together, us down in the dispatch center, if we need anything, we can call the sergeant. If we need anything at all, our lieutenant, who is currently on, is a phone call away and literally can be there in less than five minutes for us if we need anything. The sheriff has come down and worked with us before. I believe that it would be a disservice to us as employees and the community to take it out from underneath the sheriff's department. I believe, you know, that it would be best to keep it where it is now and keep it running the way it is and just build from here with it. And I appreciate your comments, Mr. Rice, and your support with that. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing or hearing none, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Lightner.
This has nothing to do with all the fun stuff we talked about today, but I just want to remind everybody that we have Beer Fest coming up next weekend. It's Saturday, the 14th, at the fairgrounds from noon to 5:00. It's $25 in advance, $35 at the door, and we're going to have like 150 different beers, so should be a good time.
Mr. Rice?
I'd just like to make a comment to Mr. Bormuth. Be careful, you're sounding like a politician.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing or hearing none, we're adjourned.